Okay, welcome to our meeting for student. You have to do this, right? Oh, you guys have it. Thank you. Welcome to your student and staff recognition meeting. One more minute. The first thing that we need to do, I am reconvening our open session and then ask all of you to stand for the pledge and our student board member will lead you in the pledge.
Please stand, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where its stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin tonight with our recognitions of employees. Mr. Conlon.
And thank you, President Vickers. So this evening, we're recognizing our classified and certificated employees of the year. So I'd like to first, if Doug Bowman could please join me. There he is. All right, so Doug, in his sixth year of permanent service here to LBUSD as our district delivery driver and Swiss Army knife for the nutrition department. Doug's impact can be felt all over the district. He exemplifies a can-do attitude who's always willing to help others with whatever task they request of them. He happily fills in as a nutrition assistant if our kitchens are short-staffed or helps deliver numerous supplies to all of the various trainings and PDs that we facilitate. But one specific trait that I truly appreciate about Doug is how he just exudes a true enjoyment for what he does. He goes about his job with a smile on his face almost as big as when he hooks the big one on fishing excursions with his family. So if we, if we all could exude a tenth of the joy that, that he, that he exudes, we'd all be better off. So Doug, on behalf of the entire LBUSD family, we thank you for your hard work and dedication to our district and just want to say how much we appreciate you. You truly embody the spirit of LBUSD and I personally enjoy working with you every single day. Hang tight. Did Erin Carlton make it? Erin, come on down. Come on. Good evening. All right, so in her seventh year of service with LBUSD as a special education IA, Erin is our category winner for the paraprofessional instructional assistance category. And it's, so a few words from her, her team at Top of the World. So it's no small feat to capture the impact that Erin has at TOW. From the counselors, teachers, and special education staff she works with, here are some of what they love about Erin. Erin is pure sunshine and exceptional instructional aide. You, you can tell that she's special the first time you meet her. There's no one else who exudes such joy and lights up every room that she enters. With boundless compassion and innate understanding of diverse learning needs, she has transformed the educational experience for many students that, that she works with. The students she supports trust her as a haven, a consistent and steady refuge to anchor their hearts in tough times. So Erin not only provides academic guidance, but also serves as a source of inspiration, encouraging self-confidence and fostering a love for learning. What truly sets Erin apart is her ability to build meaningful connections with students and colleagues alike. Erin's impact resonates far beyond the classroom and leaves an indelible mark on the lives of all that she touches. She leads with love and she makes an impact, not just at TOW, with, with everything that she does in our community. So Erin, the support, the students she supports, along with all of the TOB family, are so lucky to have you. You have a heart of gold and you're definitely someone we should be celebrating. So we're lucky to have you here and congratulations. Join Doug. All right, so our third category winner, unfortunately, she's not able to be here today. I'll double check Missy Polino. I don't believe she was able to make it. Okay. So Missy, in her ninth year of service in LBUSD, is our division winner, our, our category winner for the clerical administrative series division. Missy, as the counseling assistant at LBHS, is a consistent welcoming face of the LBHS main office who's willing to help anyone, even grumpy visitors, and is always smiling. Missy is often visited by students and families who have graduated years ago, who still come back to see her and check in. A testament to her many connections with kids. Missy's skill set allows her to juggle four very different counseling calendars, track down students and teachers for meetings, and keep counseling support and services to students and families running smoothly. When Missy deals with students and families, they all feel supported and seen in her presence. Missy always makes it a point to ask people how they're doing and generally want to know. She remembers the specific details and follows up with the students. She truly cares about each and every student on campus. She's a true heartbeat of the front office and they jokingly call her the saint because of her extremely high patience and can-do attitude and care and compassion. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Missy Polino. All right, and, and next, if I could please have Dr. Allman and Lynn Gregory, please join me at the podium. So this evening, with her seventh year of service with LBUSD, Lynn Gregory, our college and career specialist at LBHS, is our classified employee of the year. As a parent of a student who graduated last year from LBHS, I, I witnessed firsthand the incredible care and support that Lynn provides our students as they navigate the immense stress that comes with the college admissions process. So as a dad, I truly thank you and for all you did to help my daughter's journey be a smooth one and, and thank you for all you do. So now Dr. Allman is going to share a few words about your impact to the LBHS family.
Good evening, board and community. Thank you for being here. It's my pleasure and honor to recognize a friend and a colleague in Lynn Gregory. As the Laguna Beach High School College and Career Specialist, she brings the term specialist to another level. She mentors, assures, brokers, and guides students and families through a broad array of college and career opportunities and exposure during their time at Laguna Beach High School and beyond. Lynn exposes all of us to college options by hosting amazing college showcase nights. In addition to that, she schedules hundreds, and I do mean hundreds, of college recruiting presentations to our students during the school day. And she's always good for words of encouragement and acts of faith when students and families need it most, because sometimes it's just difficult for our young adults to take their next steps and map out their future after high school. Additionally, it's also hard for us as parents to let go too. If being there the way she is for students and families wasn't enough, she's the primary purveyor of classiness and charm on our campus. Consistently creating first-class experiences for students and staff, this abridged list includes hosting birthday luncheons or holiday get-togethers, greeting our many college and career visitors with freshly baked scones and LBHS swag, or, most importantly, reminding our young adults that charm and class never go out of style. This always starts with a firm handshake, good eye contact, and a smile. Good interactions, important exchanges, and opportunistic meetings, as well as scholarship offers, are always followed up with a personal handwritten thank you letter. Thank you, Lynn, for your service to our students and the greater school community.
All right. So in our last and certainly not least employee recognition, can I please have Dr. Hatchell, Principal Elmoreau, and Shannon Chastain? All right, so in her 18th year of service with LBUSD as a teacher at Elmoreau, I'd like to introduce Shannon Chastain as our 2024 Teacher of the Year. Although my daughter didn't have the pleasure of having you as a, as a teacher, there are hundreds of students who are lucky to call Shannon as their former teacher. So thank you for your dedication and your impact to help all the students that you've had, that you've reached, as well as far beyond your classroom walls. So now I'd like to pass the mic to Dr. Hatchell to share a few words about how much they value you at Elmoreau as well.
Ah, Shannon, where do I start? I told her that I was going to roll out a red carpet and give a tiara to her and make her walk down as though she was getting married and she about killed me. So I'm going to spare you that and just say that you are an extraordinary teacher, Shannon, who has been a part of the Elmoreau team, as Mike said, for 18 years. You are a talented facilitator of learning where you build independent thinkers and decision-makers and you create a classroom where students build relationships and take risks to explore new ideas and concepts with confidence and with excitement. Shannon's been instrumental in developing Elmoreau's PBIS plan and infusing her creativity and passion with integrating our character counts program with PBIS and growth mindset. Shannon is a tech lead, helping our staff to elevate our skills to incorporate technology in a meaningful way to enhance student learning. Shannon brings joy to our staff with her infectious smile and her holiday-themed leggings. And you embody everything that we would admire, Shannon, in a Teacher of the Year. Thank you for representing the entire teaching profession with class, ease, professionalism. We are so honored to recognize you tonight and it is absolute pleasure and joy to work with you. Congratulations.
Yep. And the next to the podium is Mr. Joe Vidal, Principal at Thurston.
Thank you, board. At this moment, I would like to call up Mrs. Martinez from Thurston Middle School for the Instructional Leader Award. These staff awards are special because these nominations come from her peer group. Our staff voted for Mrs. Martinez not only because she is an amazing educator, department chair, admin designee, attendance TOSA, club leader, or friend or colleague, but because of her kind, caring, and thoughtful leadership around her work as a school-wide behavioral lead and the work she has done to lead other teachers and students, creating tremendous positive reinforcement practices for students and staff and award structures. Her thoughtful and systemic restorative practices have dramatically altered our instructional approaches to our school-wide behavior and the numerous ways in which we mentor and recognize our students. A big thank you for your leadership and for the transformational instructional practices that you have created at Thurston and made it such a warm, supportive environment for our community and we deeply appreciate it. Congratulations, Michelle. This is much deserved. This next award is also very special as where our staff members also nominated their peers. I would like to call up Darcy Anderson, Amanda Van Der Veen, and Kristi Kirkpatrick. Now I know Darcy Anderson is home. She's unable to attend tonight due to supermom duties, but the other two will be here in their place. Kristi, Darcy, and Amanda are receiving the TMS Culture and Climate Award. They have been nominated because of their phenomenal work they do with our ASB and PALS student leaders. They have developed numerous platforms for students to provide voice and choice in our school, created fun and exciting atmosphere across our campus for kids to engage in games, assemblies, competitions, debates, peer-to-peer mentorships, and tutoring, school-wide calls to action, social emotional supports, and even collective contributions to develop our students as global citizens, such as their recent work with Laguna Pantry, to name a few. These amazing educators lead with their heart and are continually looking for new and creative ways to develop our student leaders, develop sustainable and authentic peer-to-peer supports, and empathetic citizens. Knowing these educators and knowing the values and passions that they have, I consider myself very lucky to be alongside them and give them whatever they need to lift up their ideas, especially as they mentor others to pay it forward and do their personal best on behalf of their school community. Thank you, Amanda, Kristi, and Darcy, for your phenomenal work in developing our culture and climate and on our campus and beyond. Congratulations.
Okay. All right, in just one moment, we'll, we'll begin with the elementary recognitions.
I think we are ready to start with our Plain Air Invitational. These students are recognized as some of our best artists across each of our schools, Top of the World and Elmoreau, and they're selected by our staff to join the Plain Air Invitational and they created beautiful scenes of the ocean this year that are displayed in our office. So congratulations, and as we call your name, come on up and we'll give you a certificate. Congratulations to Brooklyn Darby, Evie Hogan, Emily Hood, Kate Kirby, Carter Nguyen, Stella Robertson. And did I miss anybody from, from Elmoreau that's not, that's here? Okay. Ms. Schuler? And from Top of the World, present, we have Scarlett Strong. Same question. Is there any, anyone from TOW that I missed that we maybe missed on check-in? Okay. We're going to go ahead and read the rest of the names for our students who aren't able to join us today. So from Top of the World, we have Rocky Brenderson, Claire Hitzl, Anzenet Lee, Kinsley Long, Harper McConnell, and Esme Newton. Okay, and from Elmoreau, Harper Noonan, Sloane Swanson. And that's it for Plain Air. All right, our next honorees are for the Holiday Art Palette Competition, and this is run by the city of Laguna Beach. We had quite a few of our students that are recognized from both of the schools. So starting with Elmoreau, we have Ella Ho, Claire Kirby, Asher Lamb, and Lina Swong. Miss Doctor. And from Top of the World, we have Haley Hathaway, Ethan Kopernick, and Lucy Wilson. Not present, from Top of the World, we have Rocky Hobrick, Kinsley Long, and Ria Sumtani. Just kidding, Ria, come on down. All right. Our next award is just for Elmoreau, and this is our Boo Blast T-shirt contest winner. This is an incredible award for us to be able to give away every year, and we had over 100 submissions this year. The award winner will have their picture that is the design of our 2024 Boo Blast. So it will be on all of our t-shirts next year. And this year's winner was Kate Kirby. All right, our next award is for our peer-assistance leadership students or pals from both of our schools. Our pals do some extraordinary work and we love having our kids trained in order to be leaders on campus. They help with conflict resolutions. They do focus groups at Elmoreau. They run our Peace Path. And they give us lots of great ideas on how to improve the culture and climate of our schools. So congratulations to our Elmoreau pals. We have Estelle Back, Cade Bohenek, Shaila Chala, Abby Denny, Edda Dillon, Wilson Donovan, Brooke Gavin, Yani Goodman, Harper Haverland, Evie Hogan, Jack Slomerin, Daisy Liu, Maverick Lopez, Molly Mahoney, Teagan Mahoney, Danae Orwella, Hadley Parkin, and Henry Rolfin Gamo. Eliana Sawitz, Emma Tran, Gemma Wagner, and Sebastian Zamorano. and Sebastian Zamorano. Okay. Now for this same group, but from top of the world, these are the pals from top of the world. They're doing a great job spreading kindness all over campus. Okay, we have, oh, and I have these, I'm gonna call them off of the list because they're out of order a little bit, okay? So, we have Nessie McDonald, Harper Dorfman, Gray Lee, Sloane Fisk, Max Puffer, Wes Peters, Jack Wilson, Annabelle Arison, sorry. Emil Avalon, Sadie Ray Hall, Teddy Rayburn, Ria Sumtani, sorry. Ria, Luke Sedman, Patrick Sedman, River Hunt. And I'm gonna read the rest of the names in case I missed anyone, or if you snuck in and we didn't get you checked off. We also have Abigail Cohen, Caden Dancy, Adia Dick. Oh please, we have a big group of amazing students. Annabella Dodge, Giselle Dott. Oh, hello love! Sorry about that, thank you Shay. Giselle Dai, Baxter Farnin, Brooke Filio, Clara Hitzel, Penelope Lemey, Harper McConnell, Olivia McNally, Millie Mignosa, Anna Orvalo, Ariana Ospina, Zoe Thompson, Ariana, whoa, Ariana Ospina, ladies and gentlemen. Zoe Thompson, Lynn Walton-Kazinsky, and Natasha Walton-Kazinsky. Thank you all! Lee checked in, Piper Cargill, Evelyn Coeston, Genevieve Apple, Hugh Gregg, if I call your name, come on down, stop me, Harper Hawk, Holland Kennedy, Owen Labano, Anzenet Lee, Mila Lewis, Nikki Marshall, Taya McDuffie, Lex Mullen, Gideon Muncy, Stella Murphy, Ally O'Brien, Chloe Peebler, Caden Rosa, Morgan Silsby, Caden Simmons, Elle Smith, Kai Oster, and Talia Westgard. Okay, congratulations!
Hey, congratulations to all of our elementary winners. We're gonna take a break before we begin with secondary.
And of our recognition for Thurston and for the high school. And we're starting with PTA reflections on Thurston Middle School.
All right, thank you Board. So Thurston would like to take this moment to recognize all of our student artists for the amazing pieces they submitted to this year's PTA Reflection Contest. We would like to recognize the following students, starting with Kayla Bowen. Come on up. Thank you. Natalie Deschary. Thank you. Roman Fist. Ava Hewer. And Colette Lou. And Taylor Jones. And we'd also like to recognize the following students, just in case they checked in late. We have William Anderson, Samias Adal, Izzy Tran, Maya Trevino, Gavin Trotter, Jack Strutter. And that's it. All right, thank you. Congratulations, students, just went up for a photo. At this time, I would also like to call up Chloe Otterbert, who submitted an essay for the Patriots Day Essay Contest and won with her essay titled "Laguna Heritage", a piece focused on the rich history of her community and the ways it has inspired her and so many others who have lived here or have visited the community. She displayed exceptional prose and truly has a creative gift for writing. Congratulations Chloe, and thank you for representing Thurston in our community. All right, and so Thurston would also like to recognize another round of amazing artists, our Plain Air students who spent the day with professional painters at Heiser Park to create pieces depicting landscape views of beautiful Laguna Beach. Congratulations, Wade Riders, and thank you for your efforts on creating such beautiful pieces. I would like to call up Stella Dixon, Mary Jane Peanut, and Mia Penninger. I would also like to call up Lily Romps. We'll read these just to make sure we didn't miss. Stephanie Arata, Alabama Corradini, Piper Rankin, and Graham Richland. Congratulations, students. I would like to recognize the following young ladies, not only because they're amazing, well-rounded students, but because of their devotion to the TechTrek Steam Girls Camp Challenge, where they participated in various STEM challenges and crushed them all, which comes as no surprise. A big congratulations to these future leaders and for them representing Thurston so well. I would like to call up Parker Bryan, Izzy Tran, Marina Strombaum, and Lisette Zingali. Congratulations, students. All right, and finally, this next and final group of students we'd like to recognize is a very special subgroup of our students. Not only are they our peer-assistance and leadership students who provide school-wide outreach and support to other students on our campus through a long list of team-building activities and supportive activities, individual and small group peer mentoring, conflict resolution, youth leadership activities, but their ongoing dedication to partner with students who are struggling academically. The students I'm about to call up have dedicated numerous hours of their own time to build supportive and caring relationships with other students in need, and coach them, and teach them skills, provide them many lessons to ensure that those students find success. At this time, I would like to honor the following students. Alexis Berger, Ella Black, Stella Dixon, Tessa Duran, Jordan Flynn, Margot Freeman, Gabriella Garwal, Mason Gruba, Elena Lo, Ailey Perry, Audrey Peterson, Donna Posas, Graham Richland, Warren Rootle, Samias Adal, Sophie Shaper, Rosie Simpson, Alice Tachenko, Taitlin Tonkovich, Maya Trevino, Sienna Uday. Congratulations, students, and thank you.
High School Principal, Dr. Olmen.
Good evening Board, Breaker Nation, thank you for being here. Parents, greater school community, I'm honored to really highlight the accomplishments of a great group of students that we have here this evening. I'd like to begin with our National Merit Semi-finalists. National Merit Semi-finalists constitute less than 1% of the nation's graduating senior population, so it's kind of a big deal. All right. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some 7,140 National Merit Scholarships worth nearly $28 million that will be offered in spring. To be considered our National Merit Scholarship Award semifinalists, must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist level of the competition. About 95% of semifinalists are expected to attain finalist standing. And approximately half the finalists will win the National Merit Scholarship, earning the Merit Scholar title. From over 16,000 semifinalists, more than 15,000 are expected to advance to the finalist level, and in February, these three students will be notified of this designation. All National Merit Scholarship winners will be selected from this group of finalists. Merit Scholar designees are selected on the basis of their skills, accomplishments, and potential for success in rigorous college studies without regard to gender, race, ethnic origin, or religious preference. Congrats to these three outstanding seniors, one of which is currently playing a basketball game. And that is, that is Elena Sebold, who's not here tonight. But please help me honor and welcome Kira Hundhausen and Christopher Herkins. I'd like to continue our recognitions on the student leadership front. Our Laguna Beach High School Student ASB Leadership Recognition this evening is in honor of Riley Deason. Come on up, Riley. You're gonna have to stand here while I talk about you. Is that okay? All right. This this amazing student is truly outstanding in her class. And she is also an amazing high school leader within the Laguna Beach High School ASB program over the past two years. The Laguna Beach High School family has watched Riley grow in her confidence and ability and authority, all while maintaining a consistently sweet and compassionate demeanor. Riley is very thoughtful and deliberate in contributions during ASB committee meetings and executive board meetings. She has a unique way of helping others to consider angles they may have missed and always helps the younger classmen to find their voice. Because of this, her peers hold her in high regard and frequently seek her advice and guidance when tackling various tasks. Riley has an incredible organizational skill and has done an exemplary job balancing the demands of being ASB Vice President, cheer captain, and achieving a high level in her academics. Throughout the time, we've been lucky enough to work with her, the ASB advisors, the leadership team, and I, her principal, can always count on her to, no matter what the circumstance, always come through. Her work ethic and sense of responsibility are truly commendable. Congratulations, Riley. I'm also excited to honor two students for our mental health awareness and leadership work that they've done on campus. Ryan Chang and Audrey Calliff. Thank you both for being here this evening. Ryan and Audrey are dedicated members of the LBHS Peer Mentor Group. They are quick to jump in and offer their support for any activity that the peer mentor team takes on. These two students have a passion for spreading mental health awareness and connecting with students to ensure that no student is ever feeling alone. Both Ryan and Audrey take the lead role in the LBHS Peer Mentor Program and set the tone for student-team meetings. They are also actively involved in the planning and filming of our mental health film project, which will be submitted to the County Office of Education under the Directing Change Film Contest in March. Compassionate, engaged, passionate, and creative, these two young adults exemplify the role of a peer mentor on our campus, and the Laguna Beach High School counseling team and support team can always rely on them for any task, including knowing that a student is safe in safe hands when needing some extra support and care. Thank you, Ryan and Audrey. All right. We were able to cover a little academics, a little, I'm sorry, a little mental health and wellness, and of course, leadership, and now we get to cover some of our athletes. So first of all, thank you all for coming. I know you all, as high school students, are very busy. My first honoree I'd like to recognize on behalf of our Women's Tennis CIF Champions is Kendall Berisford. Kendall is representing the Women's Varsity Tennis Team, who won the Division II CIF Championship, beating a very talented Calabasas team, 10-8. Every player scored at least one point in the championship match. This CIF Championship for Women's Tennis was the first for Laguna Beach High School since 2005. The team displayed great camaraderie, and Kendall was an integral part in providing the leadership for this great team. Congratulations, Kendall. Now, being our first honoree, you have to stand up here longer than everybody else, okay? Next, I'd like to welcome and congratulate Diego Otterberg. And his teammate, Cade Anderton. Diego scored four goals in both the semifinal and final games of the Division I CIF Playoffs. The Breakers made an incredible playoff run, eventually losing in an emotional, highly contested overtime game in the finals. Still keeps me up at night, by the way. As the team captain, Diego made everyone feel welcome. His commitment to learn, his commitment to team unity was a great example of a great athlete that also demonstrates his qualities as a great young man. Diego was integral in bringing together a bunch of individuals and leading them together as a team. Thank you, Diego. Cade is an outstanding athlete who led the men's water polo team in goals while also guarding the best player on the opposing team. He always demonstrated a cool attitude, even in the most competitive of games. Cade is a player the coach has always trusted to do the right thing. And as one of the team captains, he put the team first and has represented himself and his school as a player with discipline, pride, and confidence. Cade will continue his water polo career in college and has signed a letter of intent to play at Pepperdine University. Congratulations, Cade. At this time, I'd like to welcome Jessica and Rebecca McCollum. If you guys want to act like the elementary kids, when they got their certificates, they just stood there and held them for however long, until the picture came and everything, so keep it up. Although Jessica and Rebecca competed as singles players this season, they took the opportunity to play together in doubles competition for the league individual matches. Jess is a senior and Rebecca a freshman, and the sisters knew this would be the only opportunity for them to compete together. And they dominated. Their familiarity with each other and their competitive nature helped earn them the 2023 Doubles Championship for the Sunset Wave League. Jessica will continue her tennis career in college and has committed to play at Kyle Pauli San Luis Obispo. Thank you, McCollum Sisters. And can we have both of our CIF Athlete of Character Award winners come forward, Anua Carey and Ben Dawson, please? First, Anua. Anua Carey exemplifies the essence of the Athlete of Character Award through her unwavering dedication, sportsmanship, and leadership on and off the track. As a standout in both cross-country and track, Anua consistently demonstrates exceptional commitment to her sport, pushing her physical limits while maintaining a humble and respectful demeanor. Her positive attitude and encouragement towards teammates create a supportive team dynamic, fostering an environment where athletes can thrive both athletically and personally. Her resilience, integrity, and genuine passion for cross-country and track made her not only a standout athlete, but also an amazing role model for others who is really fun to watch run. Congratulations. And finally, Ben Dawson. He's a young man of high character and integrity and has demonstrated those qualities at the forefront of everything he does, both on and off the baseball field. He possesses an extreme work ethic. He is a leader, and he is a great student. Ben takes pride in his responsibility as a leader to not only assure that his actions, both on and off the field, reflect positively on our program at LBHS, but also assuring that they play a key role in paving the way for those following in his footsteps. His leadership and willingness to uphold the values and integrity has not only helped set the standard of the baseball program, but has allowed him to develop an ability to connect and earn the trust of others. Ben has invested numerous hours over the years volunteering his time to the community, not just to fulfill a requirement, but because he was raised to be a kind and grateful young man, to always find a way to give something back. Congratulations, Ben.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, students and parents. We're gonna finish our night off recognizing a couple of our Career Technical Education students. So Board, on December 7th, Orange County Department of Education hosted their 10th Annual OC Pathway Showcase. And at that, they have the opportunity to highlight the amazing work that our CTE students are doing across the county. We were very fortunate to have two of our CTE students be represented that night as ambassadors for Laguna Beach High School CTE in Maverick Bayless and Max Barrow. Come on up, guys. Both of these young men are in our Emergency Response Pathway, which is our EMT class at the high school. They also are both in our Patient Care Pathway, really just dedicated to health services. And we're just so excited to see what they're gonna do as they continue on. We have a video that we'd like to share with you. One of the industry standards that students have to master in fire science, which Maverick is in, is being able to put on their turnout gear in less than a minute. We know as first responders that minutes matter drastically to saving the lives of victims. And so this is a challenge that Maverick took on at the OC Pathway Showcase, and I'll let you see if he did it or not. So he did do it right at the one-minute mark, so it was really amazing to watch him. Lots of people came around because they didn't have any idea what was going on. But it's just really, it shows the level of dedication that our CTE students put into their craft and all of the industry expertise that they have to learn. I just also want to recognize our instructor for our patient care and emergency response pathways as well, Brian Carver. None of this would happen without him. They would not know what they know today because of that. But thank you. We're so thankful for you guys. We know that you will do very well if you show up at one of our doors, because we called 911. Max?
That concludes our recognition meeting. It's been our pleasure to be able to honor you students for your achievements. We're very proud of our students in this district, and we know that you put a lot of time and effort into representing our school and all the capacities that you do. And we're appreciative that you came tonight to let us give that recognition to you and express our appreciation. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn to our next regular meeting. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 302. Thank you very much.